Sorry, are we good? Call this meeting order August 12, 2025, 6:00 PM. Please stand for Ledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Wood?
Here.
Councilmember Rick Chrisen?
Present.
Councilmember Crossman?
Here.
Councilmember King Geiser?
Here.
Councilmember Hess? Councilmember Johnstone?
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
Here.
And Mayor Joe?
Here. Uh, thank you. Moving on to a general approval. Negative approval. Uh, Councilmember Wood, is there a second? Then my fellow Crossman, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to special presentations. We have a presentation for the National Voter Registration Day Proclamation. Tilly is here as the election manager, but we also have someone else, Arter, who is an election specialist with the county. Um, he's gonna say a few words after we uh read or after I go ahead and read it and I'll go ahead and um hand it over. So, City of Yelm, mayoral proclamation, National Voter Registration Day. Whereas registering to vote, our eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on Election Day. And whereas Thurston County is committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections. And whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish September 16th, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day. And whereas the goal of the 2025 voter registration day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in coming months. And whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on Election Day. And now therefore be resolved that I, Joe DePeno, Mayor of the City of Yelm, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County, excuse me, in City of Yelm, and encourage all eligible county residents to sign the City of Yelm, Washington, this 12th day of August, 2025. Please, Arter.
Well, thank you for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. My name's Arturo Teravici and I'm here on behalf of the Thurston County Auditor's Office Elections Division. So last year, we practically passed 200,000 registered voters in Thurston County and in Yelm. As of today, we have 6,409 voters. Uh, voter registration has never been easier. You can register online at vowad.gov just using your driver's license or the last four of your social security number. And you can actually vote, register to vote in person on the same day of the election up until 8:00 PM as the polls close. 2025 is the 12th National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County. And we really appreciate your help in increasing awareness of registering and participating in the democratic process. Um, finally, our main voting service office is in Tomwater. And we will also have a second location for the November election in the Lacy Timberland Library. But we will also be doing the Vote at Your Library program, which has been very popular, particularly in Yelm. This is actually our busiest library where we teach the library staff to register people to vote. So thank you again for your support and partnership on this and so many issues.
Thank you. And any questions, Council? Arter, would you come on over here and um we will actually, for our next proclamation, excuse me, we do have a um, oh, we don't have a proclamation up here, but it is um selfie day for cities. And so I think it would be appropriate, maybe you join us for this selfie.
Absolutely.
We can put it on our uh, our social media. First of all, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here's this, why don't you hold this? And let's just do this on the fly and try to do a selfie real fast. Watch Scoot over, Council.
Everybody's in there.
We're all in. Thank you. All right, moving on. Public, excuse me. Is that it?
At the same time.
We gotta turn it in here in a bit.
Him doing his selfie.
All right, moving on to public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to testify or um speak publicly here? All right, is there anyone on what?
No hands raised.
All right, we will move on then um to the consent agenda. Um, let me read the consent agenda and then we can ask for approval. We have the July 22nd, 2025 regular meeting minutes, the August 5th, 2025 study session minutes, and the 25th. Check, Register and Financial Summary Report, as well as a June 25th, excuse me, June 2025 Check, Register and Financial Summary Report. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Councilmember Kaminsky?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my uh, Councilmember King Geiser, is there any discussion? Councilwoman Crossman?
So a quick question. Um, as I would need some nighttime reading, going through check register. There's uh multiple checks went out to individuals, but doesn't say what for. What are those payments for?
Is there any? Is there any?
Multiple. I thought I would hit one or two, but then as I was going through it, there's multiple and Mr. Colt looks like he has an answer for.
Uh, most of those are reimbursements for travel or expenses. I know three of them specifically were for water people going to a class where they needed reimbursement. And there's also, we also do refunds when people move out and that you get that other one where they're in the hundred dollars range or a couple hundred dollars when they move out and have uh run back over in their utility bill. That's like over excessive because they pull money out during title.
They could be community center rentals.
Those are labeled. Those are labeled. These ones aren't. That's why I was kind of curious, like I'm scrolling. Like, oh, wait, they're not labeled, but they're all in like a hundred dollar range, but there were some that way more. And it was this curiosity of why those weren't labeled, what they were for. There was like one, it was like a thousand dollars to somebody. And so I was like, was that overpayment on water bill? Is it? Oh, it doesn't say, so I was just.
If it's a City of Yelm employee, it's likely reimbursements, reimbursements like Cody was stating. If it wasn't employed.
There's an employee, yeah.
A few different reasons. We could look it up and get an answer for you.
Yeah, just send it to me, Josh, and I'll.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Questions, comments? All right, we do have a motion second. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have resol- resolution number 661, adopting the 2025 Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan. Cody, are you um interviewing anyone on this? Please, I'm sorry, could you introduce yourself then?
Hi, uh, my name is Kimberly Graham. I'm with Thurston County's Solid Hazardous Waste Program within Environmental Health. And yeah, I'm bringing here today the 2025 Draft Hazardous Waste Management Plan update. We developed this update through engagement with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee with the county. Um, we did some public engagement surveys as well and then, you know, just internal staff and everything as well. So the plan really doesn't have any major changes as far as the content goes. But you know, being that it was over 10 years old, it was really new to our paper, all the data that's in the plan. Um, one addition that we made, that's not really within that 200-page document that I'm sure everyone's just pumping at the bit to read, we made a website to kind of make this a little more easy to digest. So each chapter is broken down, describes what's in the chapter. There's also definitions, because a lot of these terms are technical within the plan, and just why we even have to have one as well, so.
Kimberly, could you go over some of the changes that you made?
Um, really, the only change, the only substantial change had to do with um, uh, sorry, signage that needs to go in oil collection facilities. That's about it. Otherwise, everything's pretty much the same.
Questions for comments from Council. Councilwoman Crossman?
So I needed some nighttime reading, put me to bed. So I did read a lot, almost all of it. Uh, so I have two questions. Number one, um, that was kind of concerning, that was kind of odd as well, was the population demographics listed. The city of Yelm will have a population of just, it was 13,000 some in 2045, I believe it was. I've never seen that statistic anywhere. It's been way more than that. Is that a? I was a concern of?
Hey, I'm not sure. I can definitely look.
Okay, cuz I'm like, yeah, all the estimates I've seen have been way over 20,000 people. And I'm like, if you guys are planning for only 13,000 in 20 years, the waste management, I mean, that kind of makes me wonder like, okay, well, you guys are saying only 13,000, but everything I've seen have been well over 20, 40,000 people. You know, depending on on the survey, so that was kind of concerned. And then the um, the second aspect was the, there were a couple pages dedicated to racism. I thought that was interesting and opened my eyes to him like, it's waste management, is there racism involved? And then no two's like, is whether it be racial profiling when I go to dump my waste materials off? Um, cuz it, it was kind of, the, the wording that was involved was kind of concerning to me in the, in the document. And so I'm like, is that a problem? Cuz it didn't list any issues specifically and didn't listing solutions as well. So I'm like, okay, we say this is a problem, but there's no solutions and there's no instances of that being a problem. So that kind of gives me like, what, what did I do with this information? You know, how did I process this?
Sure, sure.
Can you speak to that?
Oh, I would have to review and.
Perhaps on the um, population estimates, if you could find out how you determine those and where they came from and get back to either myself or to send to Council. We can make sure that um, Council's aware of that, um, as well as the, the basis for the um, racial racial portions of it that um, Councilperson Crossman is referring to. Great. Uh, Councilmember Wood?
I'm curious if uh, Councilmember Crossman would be interested in elaborating a little bit as to put a little light on what, what exactly he's referring to. And unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to read the uh, the particular section he's referencing. And I'm curious as to exactly.
Sure. Councilmember Crossman?
Uh, I think it's under section two and section six. I don't have my computer in front of me to pull that up.
I don't mean the section. I mean, what's, what, what did you read that made you kind of, I mean, what was it referencing?
It said that um, Thurston County says that racism is a, what was the wording? Sorry, I don't have it in front of me. Dude, I had it and then I forgot. Here's the problem. I can't remember. Crisis, that was it. That was the wording. It's at crisis levels. The House Department decides at crisis levels. And then um, it is, so I was like, okay, well, there's new issues required in Thurston County waste management that this is a crisis level that to me says there's a problem, we need to fix it. But it doesn't explain what that crisis level is. It doesn't go into further detail. It doesn't give no examples. And also doesn't give any solutions either, because there is no problem that it references.
I can just briefly, it's in front of me here, under section two demographics. Uh, the chapter provides information on resident business demographics. Uh, and the rate, the racial equity that you're referring to is 2.2, point two. Um, just briefly, I can read, it's pretty quick. Uh, it, it does talk a lot about in the section two, different parts of um, it, it talks about different demographics, including race is one of them that they um, they review. Um, this one talks about the sheila's display reservations. Um, it mainly talks about diverse diversity inside of um, Thurston County, including the demographics, like 29% of county residents identified as people of color, Hispanic, Latino, or race other than white alone. Those are identified as either Asian alone or multiracial. Two races comprise large minority groups. Sheila's in the square reservation is the most diverse communities in the region. Lace continues to be most diverse. And it talks about kind of just the breakout, the demographics of it. Um, I, I don't know.
It talks about, yeah, the breakup demographics and that's understandable. Yeah, I don't know what that has to do with waste manager, but okay. But no, I think it's in section six that it mentions the, it's at crisis levels. Um, now that was a specific quote, it said, crisis level. I'm like, well, that sounds pretty serious. Me, when somebody says crisis, that's a pretty serious term to be using. Are we just throwing that word around just to get attention or? Like, you know, or is it, is it a serious matter or is it not? If it's serious, okay, well, let's tackle it. If it's, hey, I just want some attention, I'm going to throw in the word crisis. I have nothing to back that up. Well, then, what are you doing? What's, what's, what's the point here? I wanna, you know, I go into the same thing. Okay, how do I manage my waste? My chemical waste that I produce? You know, if you're just going to throw this stuff out there, I'm like, well, now you're wasting my time because I, you know, first, you're trying to make some kind of statement or what? You know, but if it is a problem, hey, let's deal with it. Yeah, but section six also.
I'm, I'm following. I'm tracking what you're saying. It just feels like they, they put information in there that's irrelevant to, to this whole uh, this, this hazardous waste management plan.
I was gonna tell.
And I guess what I would ask as well, if, if we can gain some information uh, somewhere somehow as to what the, the process or thought process was in applying this, this D E I, we'll call it what it is, this D E I to hazardous waste management. We'd be curious to hear what, you know, what, what, what the relevance is.
Yeah, if you can provide me the exact section that you're referring to, I'll take that back.
I said, section two and six are the sections that, yeah. Uh, it talks about those things. And then the population, that's in, that's in section two as well, the demographics of the, of our population listing. And I believe that was from uh, Thurston um, you, your, I forget acronym, so.
Year sixty.
Yeah. Those numbers, I'm like, well, that's really odd. When, so where does that information gleam from? Like, from what study from how many years ago? Because it's not an up-to-date um, number at all, even close. And so this, I mean, I guess, yeah, so then does that affect waste management when your numbers are skewed? Waste management plan.
All right, thank you. Get back to us on that. Any other questions, comments on this? All right. Um, all right, with that said, we do have a resolution in front of us to adopt the 2025 Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan. Is there any further discussion? I'll look for a motion to pass. Is there a motion to approve? Councilor Hess?
I move to approve resolution number 661, adopting the 2025 Thurston County Hazardous Waste Management Plan.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Kaminsky. Is there any further discussion? Councilwoman Wood?
I just think that we need to really think about what we're, what we're trying to, to vote on here. We've had this discussion. We, and we really don't know anymore about the questionable areas than we knew when, when this was brought to us. Um, I just don't think it'd be responsible to move forward on this till we have all the information regarding these, these sections of this uh, this management plan.
The information was provided in your council packets, regardless if you did not read them, it does, it was there.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Mayor, but this has nothing to do whether or not it was, you know, I think we just went through the process. You read it to us and it doesn't explain why these things are in there. It doesn't have any, any, as, as Councilmember Crossman just explained, it calls it a crisis, yet it doesn't explain why or how.
I don't know if it does say it's a crisis. He claims it does. I don't believe it does. It does talk about equity. Um, it talks about Thurston County's racial equity plan. I think that's what he's referring to inside of that. It might, yeah, I might discuss um, their plans overall, but I don't believe this is um, I, I, I don't believe it's as big of a deal as Councilmember Crossman is alluding to, at least for our portion of it, to approve the agreement. But this is Council's decision. If you want to deny it because of that reason, that is your choice. Councilor Johnstone?
Uh, it definitely does say, uh, it says, "The Board of Health proclaimed racism a public health crisis in March 2, 2021." And it just kind of goes on, talks about their resolution. But it, it doesn't really talk about how this relates to, to this at all.
Again, that part is Thurston County's proclamation. They, it cites it, but I, I don't believe the relevance to the overall plan is a lot. If you, if you do and you do think it is something that we want to take a further look at, um, I, is there a, is there a timeline that's um, urgent right now? Do you know? If Council wants to take this off um, for that portion, that's up to Council, but it has been motion seconded. Um, Councilmember Crossman?
I guess my, my biggest um, concern, I mean, that's kind of a, a secondary issue, is that the projected numbers for people and how that deals with our plan, you know, to manage waste. If you're, you know, Thurston County is only figuring us at a lower number, much lower number than what we will actually have. I mean, is that cause for concern? That's what I'm, I mean, that's my biggest concern. The, the, the other portion that's not as big of, I don't think that plays a big as a part. But I'm kind of concerned about the numbers being skewed of, okay, you, you say we might have a population this number, but every other study and things that I've seen is much larger than that. And so is Thurston County, whether they're basing their numbers on to manage waste? Are they managing it on that smaller number or are they managing it on the larger number that I've been accustomed to? I mean, I guess that's my biggest question. Cuz I don't want us to say, yeah, we approve this and then like, oh, you guys' population is way bigger than, we don't know how to handle this and and am I making sense to people like? What that my cause is like, I want to make sure we can handle, you know, the waste of being handled from the amount of people that we expect to have.
Councilor Hess?
Um, maybe we can get some clarification. When will they be updating this waste plan? Connect the next update. Is it a five-year update? Is it done annually or is it done every decade?
Five years is when it needs to be reviewed. That doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be an update, but five years.
So then in five years, if our population is actually growing quicker than what was originally predicted, it will be addressed at that time.
Any other questions, comments by Council?
I think there's a lot of moving parts in this too, you know, from the TRPC to the growth management plan, things uh, that affect this percentage of growth. You know, so I want to take a look at this a bit deeper. And maybe if we have questions, have somebody available to answer them.
All right. Any other questions, comments by Council? It has been motion seconded. Let's do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Kaminsky. How do you vote? The A and A?
Uh, yes.
Councilor Johnstone?
Uh, no.
Councilor Hess?
Yes.
Councilor King Geiser?
S.
Councilwoman Crossman?
No.
Councilwoman Richardson?
No.
Councilwoman Wood?
No.
Motion fails four to three. We will um, go ahead and bring this to our Public Services Committee. They can ask their questions at that point. Make sure those questions are answered. We'll get a response from Thurston County on that and we will bring it up for another um, we'll probably bring it to study session, make sure Council's good with it, and then we'll bring it up to a vote after that. That work for our timeline?
That work with you?
All right, so it'll be it. Moving on to old business, there's unscheduled. Moving on to, thank you, Kimberly. Moving on to standing, standing Council Committee reports, starting with Public Service Committee.
Uh, we didn't have a meeting due to the national night, national night out, but I do want to congratulate Chief for his wonderful skills at uh, dunking. He did a good job of trying to splash those who dunked them. Uh, I don't think it was as successful. And then uh, it was a good night for that national night out. We had a good turnout. Uh, once again, thanking uh, Steel Barbecue for doing the hamburgers and hot dogs, Tim's Pharmacy for the root beer floats, and all the other elements that were out there to help uh, provide a wonderful event. So that's all I have to say about the, for that at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hess. Public Services Committee?
No meeting.
Financial Committee, Finance Committee?
We just had a meeting and uh, Stephanie shared with us the Reserve Fund Policy Draft Paperwork, which we will all study and get back with her for more discussion on our next meeting. And she shared with us a mid-biennium budget calendar. We will also go through, there's one in October and November. Um, and then she shared with us that there's going to, she's doing a boot camp, one-hour sessions internally uh, for staff, city staff to attend.
All right, thank you. General Government Committee?
Uh, uh, our next meeting will be before the next council meeting, so no meeting.
All right, moving on to Mayor City Ministerial Staff Reports. Todd?
Good to Mayor. Good evening, Council. Couple updates uh, from the various departments, uh, from the Police Department. Uh, we will have an officer graduate the academy tomorrow. Officer McNary uh, will graduate from the academy in Buryan tomorrow at 11:00 AM. Uh, also Chief Carlson, back to the Dunk Tank. Uh, he found himself uh, in another competition to end up in a Dunk Tank. Uh, this is a head-to-head competition with the Tomwater Police Chief as a fundraiser for Boys and Girls Club. Uh, the one who raises the least amount of funds will be in a Dunk Tank this Saturday. Currently, our chief is behind, so he would appreciate any help if you can go to their site and get him out of the water. So, uh, from the court side of things, Court Administrator Ramirez is planning a second passport there in September. Uh, currently, the one-day-a-week passport opportunity is working well, um, and appointments are filling up. Uh, from the clerk's office, uh, City Clerk Lynn Meyer has been working with the local Boys and Girls Club to create a Workplace Development Day. Uh, this will take place tomorrow in the community center from 1:00 to 3:30. Department Directors, Managers, the Mayor uh, will take part in this event, share their experiences uh, and offer help, helpful advice to attendees on uh, hopefully how to be successful. From the Finance Department, um, didn't, uh, Terry, I don't know if you talked about the annual audit that will take place, September, October? I don't know if you.
That we did.
So that'll take place uh, September, October. Public Services, uh, they had a few hiccups with the splash pad over the weekend. Nothing major, just was shut down temporarily, uh, hit and miss. Um, uh, once the season's over, they'll uh, general maintenance should take care of the uh, problem it had to do with uh, priming. Is that right?
That's correct.
Uh, Director Colt looking at set up an open house in September that will address uh, questions, concerns over the annexations that will soon come to Council. Uh, we may also add a couple of our ongoing projects to highlight during the same open house. Uh, probably the middle of September is what we're looking at for that. Uh, from the HR Department, our first ever new employee orientation will take place on September 17th. This was for all employees that were hired in 2025. I think there's how many?
Oh, ten?
Ten, okay. At least ten. Uh, from the Communications and Rec Department, uh, working on ending the summer successfully by supporting rec activities through the end of September before switching into holiday mode. Over the next several weeks, you can see courses on the fitness court, cookie decorating classes, Zumba, Paint a Planter Workshop, and Movies in the Park. Scoop Fest is this Saturday from 10:00 to noon at the Community Center with ice cream-themed crafts, activities, and games. This is one of two STEM uh, days that are offered free to the community thanks to a grant from the Park Foundation. And lastly, from uh, my report is Pup a Losa is scheduled for August 26th at Yelm City Park, where four-legged residents will enjoy treats, obstacles, dog-related vendors. I don't, she lives.
It's Dog Park.
Dog Park. Papa Lose It. Bring your dog.
That's all I got. Thanks, Todd. Uh, pardon, you hit on most of the things I was gonna talk about. Uh, I did attend the Chamber Luncheon earlier today. Uh, we got a presentation from Bounty, um, Thurston Bounty. And they went over Bounty for families, excuse me, Thurston Bounty for families, and they went over um, a few different. And they went over, um, a few different things, including our new garden, which, um, is an educational garden for folks. Um, recommend in our Yelm City Park, recommend taking, taking a look at it. Great food also provided. Um, I, um, why am I going blank on them? Run man turn.
Everyone remembers.
Other than that, um, looking forward to going to the graduation tomorrow for our officer. And, uh, yes, thank you for talking about National Night Out too. That was a wonderful event for us here in the City of Yelm.
Community Conversations.
Community Conversations. I will try to, there is Community Conversations tomorrow. Um, Chief and I are going to be coming back to get you back for it, uh, but we are going to try to make it for that as well. Uh, but Todd will be there regardless, so won't Cody. Um, and that is at my pause at noon tomorrow. Thank you, Todd. Other than that, that's all I've got. Councilmember Report, starting with Councilmember Kaminsky.
I didn't have any meetings, but I've just been enjoying the summer and all the wonderful events we have. But I think I have to say my most favorite so far was the twenty-first, twenty-fifth anniversary of the Yelm Cinemas. Had just a gorgeous gala evening. I just loved it. It was fantastic. Just to see the whole community, most of the community come out.
Councilor Johnstone, your report. Councilor Hess?
Uh, from Interstate Transit, uh, one of, one of the things that came out during the meeting is that the executive, the exec, executive director was given a tour of the Nisqually Indian Tribe Medically Assisted Treatment Center, which is on Pacific Avenue. It's brand, it's brand new, ready to open up, and it will be addressing the opioid crisis within Thurston County. So that's really gonna be very helpful for, uh, our law enforcement, uh, side, that they now have a place that they can hopefully be able to recommend people to go to, and also help out a lot of community members that might fall into that issue. Uh, then we also have, wanted to share that, uh, Purple Heart Day, which occurred last week. Uh, that was very, a really good day. Uh, after Ellie's Pizza, talked to a veteran, listening to, uh, some of the veterans share their stories and then, uh, discussing some issues, uh, that they would like to see addressed. Uh, I'm waiting for a, uh, summary of it, but some of the issues that they're concerned about are, uh, when it comes down to the youth, uh, cause they move quite a bit. Some are lucky enough to move maybe once or twice during their parents' career. Others are about every two to three years, and so they move from one school district to another. Of trying to find some way to help them out and address that, and that's a school board issue. So, you know, that's where they're gonna be working with that. In reference to, uh, the city, uh, they're looking forward to hopefully seeing more resources, uh, being centralized. And I know that you, Mayor, are addressing that issue with the veteran service organizations in our community. And so they are, uh, wanting to see that taken care of as well. And hopefully I'll have a better report when I get the full summary of it, of that. Uh, Farmers Markets, uh, want to bring up that last week was National Farmer Market Week, and our farmer's market has been doing very well. I think we've, we're very lucky to have them, uh, as a home here in our community. And there's a lot of support for them and they are growing. I've noticed that year after year. And it's really nice to talk to the, uh, farmers themselves, the people who bring the produce in, of what they are looking forward to. So hopefully, knock on wood, as the years go by, we'll get that increase as well, and that'll be really nice to have. Uh, I covered the National Night Out, uh, but I just wanted to also bring up in reference to that. The National Night Out actually started in nineteen eighty-four, uh, as a nationwide, uh, or, uh, celebration. And it was to bring neighbors together and have them, one, be able to know who's who, introduce, as well as to develop a relationship with law enforcement that here's this one, you know, by being a, a community and understanding each other, we can work, work on that. And then the last thing, because we had the, uh, primary occur and we had the voters thing that you brought up, I just would like to put out, this is something that, uh, former Secretary of State Wyman loved to, uh, come and communicate to all the people. For all the, all the eligible voters, if sixty percent, which is the average, are actually registered, and out of that sixty percent, thirty percent actually show up to vote, when you break the numbers out, that is nine percent of all eligible voters plus one that are making decisions for everybody. And so it's very important that we look at trying to get people registered and not only register, but also out there voting. So thank you for the proclamation, Mayor, and recognizing that this is very important, right, that we as citizens of the United States have. And that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Councilmember Hess. Councilor Kingizer?
I, uh, met with the Southeastern Fire Authority last Wednesday. Um, just a few highlights is, um, increasing calls, increasing number of calls, not just on Fourth of July that we've talked about before, but, um, an increasing amount of house fires even lately has been really interesting. Um, lots of investigations going on, seemingly more than average. Um, they are actively seeking out, um, just solutions to when that kind of becomes overwhelmed, uh, other resources. Um, we've been working with them, the City of Yelm, um, offering the heavier equipment that's required of that. I thought that was kind of interesting. Uh, the Yelm bypass looks like, um, they reached out to the fire authority, so things appear to be moving. So that's really cool to hear that, kind of on all sides of the thing. Um, we went to the Chamber Luncheon as well, Bounty for Families. It was really interesting to hear about all of their different, like six different programs that they're a part of. It was quite a bit too hot for me to go out and do the tour today, um, but go check it out if you haven't. Um, it is a really lovely little space, and now that the Veterans Memorial is over there too, there's a couple of benches and you can just sit nicely up there, so. That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Crossman?
No.
Report. Councilor Richardson?
I do want to echo the twenty-fifth celebration for Yelm Cinemas was phenomenal. Uh, I was reading on the card, I think it was, was Horres de Flores, I think it's just hors d'oeuvres. Uh, is what they were, and they had some awesome hors d'oeuvres. It was just phenomenal. They honor people, they know how to honor people, make them feel welcome, make them feel community. Speaking of Yelm Cinemas, about a month and a half ago, we got pulled over because, uh, I, just something I learned, because I guess I've been driving wrong for the last ten years or so. So on a solid green light, we were taught in nineteen ninety-nine, driver's ed, that there's a gr- a solid green, not, not an arrow, talking about solid green, that you could pull into the intersection and, and wait for an opening. And when you see that, you can turn. And even if you pull in the intersection and you wait for opening, there's no opening and it turns red, that you're still allowed it to go. Apparently this is wrong, okay? This is a thing that they've changed. Cause I've been driving like this, I've been talking to the chief about it, he's like, I just did that last week. I was like, I know, me too. So for those of us, I know it's new to you, I know. Uh, anyways, I wasn't driving, my wife was. And we were arguing, and I said, get into the intersection, get in, and I gotta go, and it's just red, go, go, go. We got pulled over. Fortunately, we didn't get a ticket, so it saved our marriage. So that was good. Um, but for those of you who do not know, a solid green, you are not to go into the intersection, you are to wait behind the stop bar. There's a young man here, he, he knows. I didn't know. So you wait behind the stop bar, and then if there's an opening behind the stop bar, you may go. If it turns red, you've missed your opportunity. Do not go. Yelm PD will pull you over. If your wife is driving, they might not give you a ticket.
You're a driver's ed instructor.
I'm just saying, you're with me. Cool. Just, just for general knowledge.
You're wrong.
Yelm PD did their job. I don't want people to think just because you're on city council, you don't get pulled over. You do. And I, I don't think you knew I was on city council, he's a rookie. So it's fine. But anyways, long story short, learn how to drive, follow the rules, and be a good citizen.
Thank you, Councilor Richardson. Councilor Wood?
I had a scheduled TCOM meeting this, uh, since our last meeting that was canceled. I have Transportation Policy Board in the morning.
All right, sounds good. Thank you. All right, and today we do have an executive session uh, to consider the minimum price at which real estate will be offered for sale, or at least when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of decreased price. Uh, that will be up according to RCW fourteen one three zero point one one zero one dash C. Um, this will be a forty-minute, um, a forty-minute executive session. And we will, we will adjourn at six thirty-six, come back in forty minutes. Um, excuse me, we will adjourn to the executive session, not adjourn the meeting. Do you want to go ahead and just pause everything? And you can stay if folks want to stay.
Motion.
Motion by Councilmember Kaminsky.
Aye.
Second by Councilmember Crossman. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same post say nay. Meaning adjourned.
Chris, I got that second.